We're going to call this meeting to order for June 29th, 2020, special meeting of the York County School Board, and we're meeting this morning in order to approve one action item. But before we start, I just want to say that the team has been working on our reopening plan, so we're still trudging away through that. Dr. Shandor, any additional comments on that?
Sure, I can share just a few. So, Dr. Carroll, our chief operations officer, as you know, has been working with a group for the last eight to nine weeks, as he shared with you previously, regarding all the different facets of information that we have to consider, all the guidance from the State Department, CDC, and other groups. His, our recommendation, we're looking for the next couple of weeks, we're hoping to bring the board some options and recommendations by hopefully around July 27th. We don't want to hold that date as a firm date, but it is something that we've discussed. I've had numerous conversations with other superintendents in the region, and we're all kind of looking at a similar timeline, given we're all so closely, close in proximity. We're also going to bring in the superintendents, I have a roundtable, we're going to bring in that group, we've offered that up for, I believe, Ms. Ford, July 6th or the 9th, I can't remember the exact date. But we're going to bring them in, get some feedback, so we can hear from the community, that group a little bit too, about items to consider. Dr. Carroll's going to present some of those recommendations moving forward. We also understand that some of our northern school divisions have made some decisions as far as how they're going to go. I think one division went one way, another division went another way, and I think they're getting, you know, significant pushback. So, again, we recognize that this is going to be a challenging, a challenging decision moving forward, and we're going to continue to work with our community. I do understand from Ms. Goff this morning that the surveys that we sent out, we had a really wonderful response rate so far. So of the 13,000 or so that we've sent out to families and parents, we had 9,000 folks already respond, which is a really good response rate. And for staff, as you know, we have about 1,800 staff members full-time, we had 1,400 responses. So I believe we're sending a reminder out today for, I'm sorry?
Two more days.
So there's two more, two more days to the survey. We're going to send another reminder out today for those folks who haven't taken yet. So we're getting some really good information from that. And of course, we'll share that with the board in the next, in the next few weeks.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Shandor. So our action item is consideration of approval of Resolution 20-32, a resolution authorizing specific procurement. Mr. Bill Bowen, chief financial officer, will provide information regarding.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just wanted to provide you with just an overview of, of the procurement resolution here today. Typically, what we try to do is we try to, we try to capture all of that end-of-year spend at that last board meeting. However, we had an unusual circumstance this year. When, when the schools were closed down, we were told by the state to expect that we're going to have fewer sales tax dollars and we're going to have fewer lottery dollars. And so in preparation of that, we reduced our budget by close to $3 million. However, after our June business meeting, the state sent out an email and our final revenue, and we actually got an additional $1.5 million. So from that money, had we had, had we known that earlier, we would have done a lot of this spend, typical year-end spend, which is for buses and for textbooks and for, and for technology. We would have typically done that at the business meeting in June. However, we didn't realize that we were going to have this money because, but, but we overprojected on what we were going to lose, so.
Which was a good thing.
Which is a good thing. So, so now we, we have a million and a half, and I'll walk you through what we, what we're doing with the items that are on the agenda or on the resolution. So the first, K5 math textbooks and K8 math textbooks. If you recall, I believe it was in the April board meeting, Ms. Skinner and her staff presented the, the review process that, that occurred with the K, with, with the math textbooks. And there were some unknown, if we were going to purchase this, we had, we had to wait to see with end-of-year dollars. And so because we didn't have the, the dollars at the time of the, of the last board meeting, we didn't include it. So we're including it now, but they're not going to be purchased by, by June 30. The, the instruction department is still evaluating the, these, and these are online textbooks, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
The online resources that go with the adopted.
Yes. So instruction is still evaluating these online resources to see, I guess, if they integrate well with the new learning management system. And so we wanted to go ahead and put it on here because if after, in July or August, these funds, the assessment is complete and they decide to buy these, these textbooks, then we'll be in a position to do so. So how will we pay for these? What we'll do is if, since they're being pushed into next year, historically, the county has re-appropriated our end-of-year fund balance, and they've historically re-appropriated those funds for technology textbooks, school buses, and for capital. So we would ask the county to re-appropriate those dollars specifically to cover the cost of these textbooks. The Grafton Complex HVAC replacement and the TAB High Security Vestibule, these are just a couple of CIP items on here. With the TAB High Security Vestibule, this is an actual, that we know that there's going to be an overage. Sometimes you don't know what you know, don't know until you tear down a wall and you start to see things that's going to cost you that wasn't original, in the original contract. So that, that item is actual, an overage for the security vestibule. The HVAC replacement, there's still a lot of work being done at Grafton High School, and we wanted to position ourselves to have some flexibility. We don't know if it's going to be $400,000 more, but certainly having it approved right now would prevent us having to call another board meeting later in the month just to, just to handle the Grafton complex. So we included that as a potential. The hand sanitizer, this is a modification to an existing contract that we have with a vendor, and so we're going to use a little bit of end-of-year funds to make sure all of our classrooms, all of our schools have sufficient hand sanitizer in the building. Special needs buses, we're purchasing four special needs buses at a cost of $412,000. And again, this is a typical end-of-year spend for, for us. And the same thing with the special, special needs vans, there'll be three special needs vans purchased for a total of $75,600. The filtering software, so as we were working through the one-to-one initiative, one of the things that we overlooked was the filtering software for the devices that we were providing. So when those students, when they're in our schools, they, we have filtering software. However, when they take those, those devices home with them, there was no filtering software on those devices. So we needed to provide something for them while they take those devices home. Now, the cost, $600,000, this is more than likely going to change and it's going to be less because the IT department is currently reviewing and up for renew the filtering software for the complete school division. So while this cost right here is just for the devices, the cost to do filtering software for the school division is about the same cost. So if we purchase, go with a new software, we can almost save ourselves four to, four to $600,000. So this is just a placeholder, and how we would pay for this is this is, this would be funded out of the Technology Reserve Fund. So all the funding that we, that we set up, the Impact Aid money, the, the county's CARES Act fund contribution, the transfer of a million dollars from our end-of-year to that Technology Reserve Fund, took into account that this cost, part of this cost, not all of it. So we will, we will look to that, to see what decision the IT department comes up with after their evaluation. So we're looking to save some money, and it won't cost us as much as, as what we have listed here. The iPads for the one-to-one initiative, this, so when we started the summer academy, we knew this was going to be our test ground for virtual instruction. And what we found out is some of the older models of iPads that we have and we've put into place don't work well with the learning, learning management system. So we're having to pull those back, and we're going to have to purchase additional iPads to work with the new learning management system at a cost of $55,000. And then the NearPod integration software, I'm going to have Ms. Skinner talk a little bit about that.
So NearPod is a software program that provides literally thousands of ready-to-use lessons, videos that align. What really makes NearPod great for our school division is most, because we are one of the few states that are not Common Core, most of the things we purchase align to Common Core. NearPod actually aligns to the Virginia Standards of Learning, which is great for our teachers. And by having this, our teachers can integrate, no matter if they're in the classroom, if they're in a hybrid model, or they're virtual instruction, it will enhance instruction that's already happening for those teachers. It also has a whiteboard feature that will be very helpful for our teachers when they're, if they are working virtually, being able to model for students. It'll work with our Word study programs, if we're trying to have students sort words virtually or something of that nature. So it's a great program that will enhance any type of learning that we have in the fall. And so we're very excited about it, our teachers are excited about it, and it works very well. Our, our support has showed us that it works pretty well with Canvas.
And then what we have listed there is the cost for three years. So in consulting with the purchasing department at the county, this is a multi-year option for us. However, all we're doing is paying for year one out of this year's, out of end-of-year funds, and that comes at a cost of about $40,000. So we'll use the program this year, we'll do a complete evaluation. If it's something that we are using and it's beneficial as part of the learning management system, then what we'll do is we will renew for years two and three.
And that, that will come out of the technology initiative also?
The first, the first year will come out as just end-of-year funds, and then year two and three will probably come out, will, will come out of instructional technology funds, where we put our instructional technology. So it'll come out of IT, out of the IT department, but under instructional technology.
Any other questions?
Yes. So, because we're new board members, if you could explain how this works. So we're coming in and you're saying that this number might not be this number in the end, this number might not be this number in the end. So what happens later? So let's just say down the line, it doesn't end up being $600,000. You're asking us to approve it at this level, it's not this level. Does that get updated later? How does that happen? Tell me what happens down the line with that.
So, so the board is approving purchases over $50,000. So we put it in the placeholder of what we believe this is going to cost us, and that's what the $600,000 is. But by the time we purchase this before September, IT will have made their decision on which, which direction it can go with the filtering software. So if, if we can go with a new software that includes the school board office and all of the individual devices, then we will have saved ourselves money. But we had the placeholder here to, to at least initiate the purchase. Otherwise, if we didn't, if we didn't do this now, we'd be calling you back probably in August.
So I think what, maybe to clarify, I think Ms. Groll's question is, if, let's say it costs $400,000, what happens to the other $200,000?
Well, it does, it doesn't get.
And then the communication behind that.
Correct.
And that just doesn't get spent. The, the 200, the additional $200,000 doesn't get spent. So in this case, that money, since it's coming out of the Technology Reserve Fund, it'll stay in the Technology Reserve Fund.
Okay.
To be used for additional devices down the road, particularly since we're using existing devices now, over the next four years, we're going to have to replace some of those devices. So we could use that $200, $200,000 as, as a replacement vehicle for those devices that are kind of mid-life and currently inactive in, in the schools.
One of the things that I've really been thinking about in talking with families and everything is the hardship that is going to be placed on families in the fall, if we're in a hybrid situation or anything. And so one of the things I've been thinking about is just a good faith thing, is there a way for the division to cover the one-to-one initiative fee the first year, knowing that $50 isn't necessarily going to help families, but it's a good faith show that we understand you're going to have to have additional childcare, we understand that you're going to have additional costs. So I guess that's the reason I was asking what happens to the money if these aren't the actual numbers.
If I could weigh in, it, those numbers, those costs and fees is going to continue to support the program. So I think that's something that, I mean, I'm not sure if we have that total number of what that would, what that would be, Mr. Bowen. However, I mean, if, if that's something that the board is considering, of course, that's your, you know, that's your guidance to us as staff members, but remember, we're bringing you, we're bringing you numbers that we feel are going to help sustain and build that budget so that we can roll out that plan over a number of years. So do you, I don't know if you have a number on that.
So one of the things I think I would need to do is to update the cash flow, that multi-year, I showed you the four-year period. So we just received an email back from VML VACO, they, they put the lease purchase out for bid, and we had some very favorable responses. We had an interest rate as low as 1.09%, which they said they, they were just tickled over it because it's almost like free money. I mean, that's, that's just so low as interest rates. So there would be some cost savings on the cost of the lease purchase, but we have to update those numbers to see what the actual cost is, and I haven't seen that cash flow yet. But again, if there's, if there's additional savings that we have as a result of a lower cost of the filter, that's something that we can consider. But I, I would need to know what those numbers are so I can project out for the four-year period to make sure that we have enough at the end and I'm not in a deficit position.
Right. And I, and I know I'm not articulating it well enough, how I feel about it, I just, when we sent out the survey about technology initiative and we talked about the fee, there was a lot of communication to board members. I know I wasn't the only one that received that as far as the, the fee. And again, $50 a year isn't necessarily going to help them with their childcare costs and everything that they're going to have to incur, but I just think it's a, it would be a nice good faith thing to say, listen, we know there's going to be glitches this year, we know this year is kind of a crazy situation for families, we know we're going to have a lot of families with hardship, and because we understand that, we want to waive that this, you know, that fee this year.
Well, that fee is, it's multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars annually. It could have, it could have an impact on, on the fund, but I would need to update, again, that, that cash flow just to see where we are, and we can bring it back at a, at a later meeting just to consider it and present the information.
I'm just one board member, I'm just, I'm just putting it out.
I don't think we know what our plan is going to be too on going back, I mean, whether it's going to be hardship or not.
Well, part of it is, if, we do know we're going to roll out a one-to-one regardless if we go back forward, we don't go back full. So I think for, for staff, I think that it would be responsible on our part, we'll bring you those numbers and see what the impact of it is. If our chief financial officer is saying this is going to be a several hundred thousand dollar deficit, then that's something the five of you are going to need to consider if you want to waive that or not.
And one of the ways that our school division is trying to help support that is to reduce our supply fees for our families. We've been working with our elementary and our, our secondary school principals to really bring that supply fee down as much as possible to help offset that cost. They've, they've been having many conversations.
When she says supply fee, that's that list that schools get at the beginning of the year that is, has been pretty obnoxious. I'll say that as a parent that has three kids at all three levels. So they've worked, they've worked extremely hard to whittle that thing down because we reminded our principals that we have increased your, what was the?
Subliminal.
Their per pupil allocation. So two years ago, we've, we've provided more dollars to the schools that they can use for supplies that don't have to be a burden on our families.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, and what we're doing here is we, is we protect that potential obligation, particularly as we see savings move down the line here. So I think we may be well-positioned, and there's some, some other activities too that are working in that direction to give families relief. I know that we've been talking amongst one another about this particular dynamic as we hear back from families. So the ability to, to protect those dollars, that, that then leads to my next question. It's focused on the textbooks only because you talked about the reappropriation. What if we find we want to obligate that money, not necessarily to textbooks, but to something else against reopening? You gave some criteria that the county generally uses, so the reappropriation, we, we have some latitude there in the event that there's some dollars there.
We do, and once we, once we identify what that end-of-year number is, then I, I put that together and actually bring it to the board as part of a resolution, and the board actually passes a resolution asking the county board supervisors to reappropriate those dollars to us. And I usually spell it out, so much for technology, so much for buses, so much for capital, or so much for textbooks. When we know those dollars, when we know what those dollars are going to be. If we don't, then we just ask them for broad discretion and for those standard categories that they reappropriate for us. But you'll see, you'll see a request coming in the fall, early fall, asking for that reappropriation.
I just had just a, just quick questions, just highlights. On the Grafton Complex, on the HVAC replacement, is that based on a quote or is that more of a set aside based on, on previous experience?
That's previous experience.
Okay, got it. Understand, I wasn't sure if there was a quote yet. In the, in the special needs bus and the special needs vans, in addition to existing, you know, pool assets or replacements?
Jim, you want to answer that?
Bill's been in that a little more.
Yes, as I understand, what we typically do is we, we do some for, for new and we do some for replacements, but I don't know exactly the breakdown on this, but I would imagine it's a combination, yes.
They've reached the end of their life cycle. Okay, all right, that's very helpful. Thanks. And while we're, while we're on the subject, the TAB High School Security Vestibule, that's an additional $30,000 because the original set aside wasn't enough, is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
So that's how it works, the other way?
Yeah, and that, and that's typical of our construction projects, because once they start tearing into walls, you just, you don't know what, you're finding things you didn't expect that weren't on the plans. And so we, we try to set aside enough money when we get the project approved. However, in this one, we didn't have enough set aside, so that's why we're coming back to ask for the additional 30.
And Dr. Shandor, what's the average age of our schools? I know we talked about this before, and I can't remember the number.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's as old as me, so I just turned 50, I just turned 50 last week, and you know, many of our schools need a facelift like I do, and some of the other work that needs done. So yeah, our schools, the average age is 50. How old's the Grafton Complex? 24?
It was 26, yeah, 24.
Yeah, so 24 years. And to give an example about what we find behind walls, last, last summer or the summer before, when we did the Grafton Complex in the main office, a really good example of not knowing what's behind the walls, the construction folks found a significant issue there related to.
Foundation under the stuff.
The foundation under the office with walls, et cetera. And, and again, you don't know that until you pull that down. So that's an example of them, how many, staff having to come back and say, we need extra dollars because much more work needs to be done here to make this, you know, this particular space safe. And at TAB High School, as you know, when you, when you walk up to the building, they're putting that vestibule right to the left. So, you know, they've started that work, we're looking forward to getting that vestibule finished as well. So there's not just one, you know, one way into that building, you have to go through visitors and volunteers, et cetera. We'll have to go through an office to get into the building.
And we had the same issue three years ago, I believe, or at least two years ago, TAB Middle School, was a second roof on an addition, and they were redoing some stuff, and they had some mold mitigation they had to address.
That was last summer?
That was, oh, was it just last year? Okay. It, it all comes together, I mean, it's so much. But, uh, yeah, I just wanted to point that out for people that may be watching that.
That's very common, that's very common.
So you had said at the beginning that the state additional funding overage was 1.5 million, but if you add up everything on here, it's about 2.5.
Yeah, so, so, so what we, what we expect to spend, what's on the list out of this year's funds, is about $750,000. There's, there's funding that's coming, that would come from the Technology Reserve Fund that didn't have anything to do with the additional state funding that came to us. That's, that funding has already been set aside through either the excess of the Impact Aid, our, our transfer of already of a million dollars from end-of-year funds, and from the CARES Act from the county. And then the textbooks will come from next year's reappropriation dollars.
Have we seen extra CARES money, or is it originally what you originally told us it would be?
592 was the final that we saw, however, we're having to share that with some private schools that are eligible, and we've surveyed those schools, and to my knowledge, we've only received one response that Summit Christian, Summit Christian Academy wants to participate. So we'll have to include them in their plan. And what that means is, we're not just going to give them money, they have to develop a plan based on the 16 criteria, and then we will reimburse them for their costs. So they will have to submit bills to us, we'll pay the bills. I'm sorry, I said reimbursement. No, they submit the bills to us, and we pay the bills.
So it sounds like from a reopening standpoint, when I look at this laydown, that we feel pretty confident that fiscally, we, we're, we're well-positioned from a reopening standpoint with the existing CARE funds, although there, there is the additional private school dynamic, we feel pretty good about adequate funds to be able to implement reopening.
Yes, and then there's, there's, our understanding is, at least the state has told us this, that there's an additional CARES Act allocation, and we're waiting for that information on the details of the application.
That's a small dollar.
Much smaller dollars. It'll be an application process, we don't know how it's going to look, but typically when you're talking about smaller dollars, we don't generally qualify for those smaller dollars. I mean, the, the first CARES Act was like 252 million, and we got 592,000. So.
Second one's like 23, 20.
It comes, it comes in various buckets, there's an IT bucket, there's, and there's a couple of other buckets, but the, the buckets are so small, I don't know that we'll apply for them, of course, and we'll have to see, wait and see if we.
We've invested greatly on the one-to-one initiative and the technology. I know that there are, are other factors out there and that we want to be well-positioned that give, give the divisions some flexibility, so.
We had discussions this morning related to supporting mental health for our families and our staff members. We also had some discussions related to our more challenged populations of students, you know, special education students, students in poverty, EL students, et cetera. We're going to have a team review some strategies to help them transition back to school, and for the one-on-one, again, we haven't finalized these plans yet, but you know, when you think about using those CARES dollars, it's not just all technology, which is important, and we know that's a great cost, but we're also, I'm sorry, I keep breathing that thing in and I can't talk. Every time I talk, it goes into my face. We, you know, we haven't forgot about the importance of mental health in, in transitioning our kids back to school and their support, but also staff members. And you know, Dr. Vlad Duh is going to work really closely with members of his team as well as Dr. Butler in, you know, being thoughtful about taking care of our own people. But then you think about transitioning students back to school, when you think about fifth, fifth graders going to high, middle school and eighth graders going up, those kids are going to need some transition time because there was no, you know, there was no end of the year. So, so we've been thoughtful about that, and we're going to continue to utilize our resources to make sure those things happen.
Any, any other obvious funding streams? I know we're probably researching, I don't know, that grants are, are an adequate solution because of the, you know, the, the run-up time. Are there any other funding streams? Are we looking hard at potential other funding streams to support some of those initiatives?
I mean, everything that comes through that, that we can think of as far as from the state and from the feds, we funnel those and we, we channel those to the appropriate chief, then to the appropriate director, to see if we can benefit from those funds or if we've historically, you know, got those funds. So Bill, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
I'll just add that we've stipended a couple of teachers this summer to help us in those grant-writing opportunities. They just started their work last week, and they're already working on two, two grants.
Good, so they're working there in the discovery mode?
Yes.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you.
And you mentioned about the starter school. There, there's some activity that we did that didn't show up on here because the, the purchases were less than $50,000, but the operations department has, has bought these, and I, for lack of the technical term, it's just foggers, classroom fogger, they'll be able to walk into a bathroom or to a classroom or into a building or into a bus and, and clean the, the space rather quickly.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions before we take the vote? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I move that we approve the resolution, the county board, for specific school division procurement.
All right, Ms. Ford.
Yes, the motion's made by Mr. Martin and seconded by Mr. Hickman-Bacham to approve Resolution 20-32. Mr. Schaper?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Hickman-Bacham?
Yes.
Ms. Groll?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion has 5-0.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. So before we adjourn, Dr. Shandor, is there any other items you'd like to mention, or?
Yes, one item, I'd love for, if Mr., if Dr. Carroll can please pull up to the table, just wanted to share just a few-minute update on the Grafton Complex. We got, Jim received some information late last week, but I just wanted him to share a brief update with you related to the complex.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Members of the board, things are going well at Grafton now. We did have some delays, some were COVID-related and some were with the commissioning, just making sure that we had all the, all the right settings for the commissioning on the electrical switchgear. As of Friday, we started the standalone air conditioning unit that feeds our server room, which then controls all building automation, that did power on correctly and went all the way through the weekend. That was also significant because that's a high voltage unit, and so we haven't been able to test those yet. And so that was the first of the high-voltage units that is successful, so that's a good harbinger for the future. The cooling towers were being filled with water this morning, and the water's being circulated so it can give us stability in the system. And then we are going, the servers are being spun up this afternoon, and we'll be testing the heat pumps on the high school side over the next couple of days, some of them with available power and some with some generator power for some, I mentioned earlier, some power panels that need to be replaced. That way, if we do run into any other problems there, then we have lead time to address those air conditioning issues. We also have power to 90% of the receptacles in the high school side, and the parking lot lights were turned on last Tuesday night. So we're hoping to have some good testing here over the next few days, and if not, then we'll address those situations individually, but we are starting to see movement there. When we look at all the other construction that's happening on the middle school side, it's well ahead of progress as we are in all the construction projects that we have